The planning, Sykesville Planning Commission of Monday, November the sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. And our first, oh, sorry, excuse me, before I do that, any public comments? We ask that they're made from the podium and the mic, which state your name, and you do no more than three minutes for your public comments. Not ready for that yet.
Okay.
So, first order of business is approval of the minutes of the August seventh, which is the last meeting that we had. Two thousand and twenty-three minutes, I'm guessing everybody's had the chance to look at those. Does anybody have any comments on those minutes? No, any issues? In which case I move that we approve those minutes. Do I have a second there?
A second.
And, or in favor? Alright, good to go. Moving on, we don't have a county stuff, uh, update of for tonight. So we're moving straight to our business agenda, which is the rezone petition recommendation for seven, three oh six Springfield Avenue. Before we start, I know we have, we have a member of the public who has to leave and wishes to make a comment on that. And I would like to give her time to do that right now before we actually, actually start so we can have that on the record. Thank you.
Yes.
You can state your name.
Sure. Jane Merkler, and I appreciate your accommodating my schedule. I have an eight o'clock meeting that I have to run to. So, um, to let you know, I've been a resident here in Sykesville for ten years. And I'm one of the, the two residences that, residents that volunteer as crossing guards by the middle school. And that's an excellent way to get to know the, um, the children, obviously, but also the parents. And to observe the flow of traffic up and down and around Syke, uh, Springfield. I'd like to, to address three main areas of my concern. I think if you're familiar with this road on Spring, this part of Springfield, there are four roads coming into Springfield within a five hundred foot area that, uh, that includes the, the property in question. In addition to those four roads intersecting onto Springfield, there is a, a large driveway that the residents of that, that particular area use to enter Springfield and exit Springfield. In the mornings, it's very busy. And I can attest to that since I do the morning crosswork, walk stuff with my colleague. What we're faced with, uh, at least until recently, when, when some of the cars were removed from the repair shop, we were faced with the challenge as crossing guards to actually see the kids who were coming to cross because of the obstruction caused by the vehicles. In addition, as a resident of Central Avenue, when you are getting ready to exit Central Avenue and, and enter onto Springfield, the cars around the garage were such an obstruction that you really had to push out into traffic in order to see around the curve that the facility is, is based or situated on. Those are the public safety concerns. From a, a public health concern, um, I think we need to be mindful that when a facility such as car repair is doing its work, we're dealing with problems with hazardous fluids, antifreeze, petroleum products, solvents, et cetera. I have no idea who's monitoring this. That facility was empty for years and suddenly we've got a situation where they're doing car repairs. And so my question is, given the potential for hazardous waste, is that the best use for the property? I'm not against the property being used in a way that is appropriate for residential area and appropriate for a middle school that's right across the street. Given the potential for a public health concern, I'm, I'm questioning whether that's an appropriate use, the car facility, a car repair facility. The last point I'd like to make has to do with solid waste. Over the summer, uh, there were stacks and stacks of, of scrap tires in the back. It's part of business. You've got, um, eight to ten cars parked around there obstructing views, then you've got stacks of tires. So I went on the side of the Department of Environment for the state. They indicate that scrap tires pose a threat of fire, which would then release toxic fumes and oils into the air, soil, and groundwater. Additionally, scrap tires are a vector for rodent and mosquitoes, which can foster the spread of West Nile virus and other diseases. As our climate changes, we need to be particularly mindful of this. It's a residential area and it's a middle school. These are types of, of problems that we want to expose our, our neighbors to and our children. That concludes, uh, my comments. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you for that. I appreciate those comments and my notes.
Thank you, thank you.
So moving on from that, the next issue is the staff report on the agenda on this particular application.
Alright, so I'm gonna go through as quick as I can, ask everyone to bear with me. It's a little bit long, but I think it's important just to get everyone here's at page, it all make sure we're on the same page. So the owners of the property located seventy-three oh six Springfield Avenue, or the Joy property, as it's sometimes referred to as, have filed a petition requesting that the property zoning classification be changed from business local to business general to allow for the legal operation of an automobile service garage. So the town council has referred the request to the planning commission for report and recommendation. Just so everyone's aware, when the town council makes their determination, the things that they're gonna look at are listed in the staff report here. The purpose of the zoning regulation, the report recommendation from planning commission, whether there have been any substantial changes in or near the area covered by a proposed change in the district boundary lines, any new phases of the comprehensive plan for Sykesville's develop, uh, for Sykesville developed since the adoption of the zoning regulation, whether it's clearly evident that there was an error or mistake in the zoning of the subject property and whether there have been convincing demonstration that the proposed rezoning would have, would have been fully as appropriate and logical for the subject property as was the zone in which it was placed. So some quick background information, the property was originally used as a service station, which is defined in the town code as any area of land, including buildings and other structures thereon that are used to dispense motor vehicle fuels, oil, and accessories at retail, where minor repair services incidental and no storage or parking space is offered for rent. So service stations like that, they are allowed in the business local district as a conditional use, but the property did become non-conforming once the gas pumps were removed from that property and it began to be used primarily as a service garage for automobile repairs. And then once that service garage ceased operations for a period of six months, it lost its non-conforming designation and the property was no longer legally able to be used for that type of business under its current zoning. So the applicants are requesting that their property be rezoned to the business general district, which does allow for an automobile service and repair establishment as a principal permitted use. And just so everyone's aware, so should the mayor and town council ultimately approve a motion allowing for this type of business or a service garage at the location, the applicants will still need to submit a site plan for planning commission review and approval prior to any redevelopment activities, such as facade improvements, which is what they talked about in their petition. And this site planning process will provide an opportunity to work through site-specific issues such as parking, screening of materials, site lines, all this at a later time. So these aren't necessarily factors that need to be considered as a part of the request presented in this petition. Focus on this petition should remain on whether or not the requested zone is appropriate for the location. So moving on to the arguments presented in the petition, the applicant suggested there was an error or mistake in the original zoning as well as a change in the overall character of the neighborhood, which would support their request for a rezone. They also point out that the change in zoning of this property to allow for their desired business is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan. And it's important to note that the arguments are presented in this way because these are the factors that the mayor and town council are gonna be considering when they make their final determination. So for the error and mistake argument, the petition points out that it was presumably a mistake to place the property into a zoning district that doesn't allow for its historically existing use. And although this wasn't a fully accurate statement, because it was originally allowed as a conditional use when it was a service station, it could be argued that there was an oversight by creating a situation in which removing the gas pumps but keeping the rest of the business as is would create a non-conforming use on the property. They also explained that the property did receive a commercial designation despite the fact that you need size and shape really makes it hard for any other commercial use or development on that property. So in other words, if the goal was to keep the property zoned commercial, it would have made sense to allow for any variation of the existing commercial use, since most other commercial uses are, are difficult at the site. At staff does feel that this is an important point to remember when considering the, the rezone, despite the business general district generally allowing for, for more intense commercial development. As for the change in neighborhood characteristic, the petition does make the claim that surrounding road improvements, rezonings, change in water and sewer, uh, sewer service area, development of surrounding areas, all constitutes some changes in the characteristics of the neighborhood, which could support a rezone to allow for their desired use. And it is reasonable to say that we are seeing some transformation in this surrounding area in certain respects and that can be seen in the form of increased commercial development on the north end of Main Street, as well as the bottom of Springfield Avenue, uh, new residential developments in the Warfield area, as well as higher automobile and foot traffic thanks to intersection improvements at Springfield Avenue and thirty-two and increased popularity of Miller Cooper Park in our downtown. So it is reasonable to believe that these factors would support the need for additional services, like an automobile service garage in the immediate area. Promise I'll wrap it up soon. The petition also notes that the remaining undeveloped and vacant Warfield area has, um, a mixed-use zoning designation with a potential for substantial commercial development. So they believe that this would be consistent with the commercial zoning designation that's being requested for their property because it would mean that there's commercial elements both immediately north and south of the property in question. And finally, the consistency with the comprehensive plan. So the petition does accurately mention Springfield Avenue and Spout Hill intersection being listed as the northern entrance to the heart of Main Street and a candidate for improvements over the coming years. And so the applicant believes that their desired use could help reinforce that intersection as a gateway to downtown. And although their property is not located directly at the intersection, having a commercial entity that is drawing people closer to a Main Street gateway could be a positive benefit for the town. So with all that being said, the petition's been referred to the planning commission by the mayor and town council for review and recommendation. And it leaves the planning commission with several potential options. And some of those options include a recommendation of approval for the rezone from business local to business general. And as previously mentioned, the property's already set up to accommodate an automobile service garage. And the unique shape and size of the lot will make it difficult for the property to be used for any of the more intense commercial uses allowed in the business general district. You could offer a recommendation to modify the business local zone. So a text amendment essentially to allow for automobile service garages as a conditional use in the business local zone. This option will avoid a scenario of where just having a single property in town zoned as business general. And it could also have a positive benefit for the existing service garages in town by making them then conforming uses. And then planning commission can also offer a recommendation that the petition be denied with no modification to the business local zone. So staff is asking the planning commission give direction as to how the report should be drafted. And once completed, the report will be presented at a later meeting for approval by the planning commission. So that's all I got for this effort.
Thank you. So we move on to the zoning petition itself. I'd like to invite you to speak on behalf of that petition. I've read the petition. I hope all of us have read it.
Thank you. Good evening. Kelly Miller, seventy-three East Main Street, Westminster, Maryland, two one one five seven. I'm here tonight representing the applicants, Dan and Tom Joy, who both are sitting right over here. So we really wanted to make ourselves available for any questions that you might have and any dialogue about the petition. I appreciate you reading it. It was lengthy, but we attempted to be thorough. I do appreciate staff, Kevin and Joe, both working with us to get that accomplished. I, I know that, that staff is aware of this, but I will say this for the commission's awareness. The Joys have a long history with this property. Their father, they inherited this property after their father passed away. And their father was involved in this property prior to him ever owning this property. So it's, it's my understanding that this property has historically been used as a service station since about nineteen seventeen. And then there came a point in time where their father took ownership of the property after having worked at the property and continued the site. And then ultimately, um, his, his two boys, well, and their sister, I believe, inherited the property. So this does have a longstanding history in the community. They recall as children, actually, there being like soda fountains and candy for sale in there, where it really worked in complement to the middle school and there was a lot of traffic from the middle school to, to the facility. So it does have quite a history in the community. As Kevin stated in the staff report, we understand that this will be subject to a site plan process if and when this rezoning is approved. And so I think that some of the concerns that we heard from the public comment initially would be points of, uh, topic during that site plan process. For example, the parking. I understand that the site distance and certain, parking in certain areas of that site create a site distance issue when turning off of Central. And so the site plan process would delineate the parking spaces and have requirements as to where those spaces be, such that then site distance can be accomplished. Uh, I will also note that right now the site is slightly constrained because there's some equipment, they're allowing some equipment and everything to be parked there related to the water, or the water and sewer? Is it both or is it just?
Probably state work now.
Okay, the state work. Um, so, so some of the existing parking on site is being taken up by that sort of equipment right now and is not any of their use. They also do, and, and if you looked at the petition and, and the kind of visual presented there, the Joys also own the strip in back, which used to be the old railroad bed. So it would be their intent through some site plan process to perhaps put up some fencing or something on the rear of that property. There was also some concerns raised about the disposal of potentially hazardous materials or regulated materials, let's say. And I'll, I'll also point out that fuel stations, well, fuel stations are, but also service, uh, repair facilities are subject to M D E regulations and have required disposal techniques that they follow and are inspected for compliance with those techniques. So I understand the concern, it is a warranted concern, and that is something that is a required process through M D. So there is protection there. You, you read the petition and it sets forth all of the arguments, so I'm not going to reiterate them to you here tonight. I, I am here in case there are any specific questions. I think one of the most important things for me to note about this property is the size of the property. This property is point two acres. So even if you take your BG district and you look at those uses that BG provides for, ninety to ninety-eight percent, I'd say, of those could never develop on this property. This property is far too small to accommodate those uses themselves, let alone the required ancillary facilities in terms of stormwater management and parking and all of those requirements with those facilities. It really is the intent of the Joys and I'll let them answer any questions if you have any of them specifically. It really is the intent of the Joys to keep this existing facility, do some facade improvements and keep it as it always has been, kind of a neighborhood institution of that service facility to support the neighborhood area and not to expand it or grow it or, you know, sell it to a big retail user or something of that, that nature. So tonight we are requesting you to, uh, forward on a favorable recommendation to the mayor and common council. We understand that the next step will be a public hearing before mayor and council and we would, um, ask tonight that you forward on a favorable recommendation. But like I said, if there are any questions, if there's any additional information that would be beneficial for you to have, please do not hesitate to, to voice those.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, commission members, do we have any questions or comments at this particular point about this?
I do.
Steve?
Business local, business general, do we have charts?
We have our zoning map up there that, um, is available online to the public.
They're asking to rezone from business local to business general. What changes exist between those two?
So it's, it's the uses that are outlined in our town code. So essentially, anything that's allowed in the business local district is also allowed in the business general district, as well as a few additional, um, retail and commercial uses that, including a, a service garage. I can, I can run through them real quick if you'd like.
Big guys, what I'm looking for.
So the.
Additional, if you could, for, for.
So there's, it looks like there's about fifteen of them, fifteen, twenty. Principal permitted uses allowed in the business general district include amusement parks, automobile trailer or implement sales, service and repair establishments, including motorcycle shops, which is what they would like to accomplish. Bottling of soft drink, milk or distribution stations, bowling alley, carpentry or woodworking shops, department stores, drive-in eating and drinking establishments of a non-alcoholic nature, golf driving ranges, printing shops, schools of a business, dancing, music, trade, or other commercial nature, sheet metal shop, sign painting shop, uh, signs and outdoor advertising subject to the provisions of the sign ordinance in our zoning code, skating rink, swimming pools, tourist homes, and wholesale business warehousing or service establishments, except first allowed in the I R zone, which we do not currently have any business at. And then, as well as any structure permitted as regulated as a principal permitted use in an R seventy-five hundred or business local district.
You said something, homes, I didn't catch that.
Tourist homes? Tourist homes.
Tourist homes, thank you.
Okay. Reading the preamble, if you like, to business local. Let me read it. The purpose of the local business district is to provide for logical locations where the retail services needed by the town population can be made available. The area is centrally located near the locations of existed and expected population concentrations and would include portions of the downtown business area as well as other neighborhood business locations. That's local business. General starts out, the purpose of the business general business district is to provide logical locations for businesses of a more general nature than heretofore provided in the business local district. Businesses proposed include retail, um, wholesale, and some light processing operations. That's essentially the difference in intent. If you go into the, um, setbacks, alright, yard size, it makes some very specific requirements for business general. This is business local as well, but they're more malleable. It requires thirty-five feet at the front of the property. It requires at the side of the property, when it's next to a, a, an R-rated, um, zoning, twenty-five feet. It requires twenty-five feet at the rear. And I would argue, I would ask right now, does it meet that? And the answer is I don't think it does. At the rear, yeah, but at the sides and the front, in certain areas, definitely not. And for me, one of the issues about that, and I'd like you to address it, is that one of those setback problems occurs at exactly the point that the pedestrian crossing from the middle school meets the public right of way at that building. And almost exactly the exit point of one of the service bays on that building, clearly not meeting setback requirements. So, um, I wonder if you have a response to that particular thing?
I was hoping that I would have John Lemberman from RTF and Associates here with me tonight, who prepared this plan that you all got a copy of. That being said, I, we did specifically look at the zoning districts and I believe that we looked at the setbacks. I wish we had the measurements shown on here. But I, if I recall, and maybe you recall differently than I do, but during our initial conversation, I didn't think, I didn't think we foresaw setbacks being an issue as the building exists.
Well, again, I think, I think the issue there is that it's an existing structure. So regardless of what the setbacks are, because it's an existing structure that we're not being asked to modify in any kind of way, like the setback, like no matter what the setbacks are, it's probably not gonna quite meet what those are. Now, if they were asking for an expansion of the building, it would be a clear denial because they can't meet the setbacks that are in, in place. But because it's an existing building, in almost no matter what zone I think you put that building in, it's probably not gonna meet a setback. That's my understanding of the conversation.
Okay, I, thank you.
I, I also think that, that those setbacks are there for a reason. And while the building is an old building and during the planning process when it was built, probably nobody really paid much attention to that. Maybe that language wasn't even there when that building was.
Where we didn't have zoning at the time.
Yeah.
Nineteen seventeen.
They're there for a reason and part of that reason is public safety. And that for me is one of the main caveats that I have about this particular application is public safety. That the fact that it, it, it's in a place where there's considerable foot traffic, but there's no footpath. So there's a public right of way that goes across it. When it was a service station, when, when it had a gas pump, it had a forecourt. It had a concrete forecourt. And, um, it, it meant that in order for traffic to be able to get to the gas pumps, you couldn't have the parking issues that exist with the current business. We've been fortunate, I think, that it's been, been run as a, as a, as a, as a repair station for almost the last year as a non-conforming use. We've been able to see exactly what that looks like in practice. And in practice, there has been very large quantities of vehicles parked across the, the front facade of that, of that building to the extent that people have had to walk into the actual roadway to get around the public right of way. And I have a photograph on my phone of, of one vehicle parked completely across the front of that building at that point where you don't have a thirty-five foot setback. So that anybody coming past with a stroller, any child walking past, anybody actually has to walk into traffic or potential traffic to get around. And it wasn't there just for an hour, it wasn't there for a day, it was there for well over seven days, just, just like that. And that to me, you know, as a, as a, as a, someone who's considering whether this is an appropriate use for the neighborhood, is a bit of a red flag, I have to say. And as I look at the, um, the forecourt, which was taken up and the gas, gas tanks were taken out for environmental reasons, that concrete forecourt was never replaced. It was basically filled in with the existing earth that was excavated from it. And so amalgam was thrown on the top of it to give it a surface to walk on, but it's completely permeable. So we've got cars that are coming for service, which may well have transmission leaks, which may well have engine oil leaks, which, which may well have cooling system leaks. Anything that drips on that surface can't be cleaned up, it's gone straight into the ground. And, you know, while there may be processes in place for within the building to what happens to the fluids that are drained from vehicles once they're in, that to me is, is an issue of, of public health and safety, which if we were to recommend that this goes ahead, is not really addressed. There are still repairs taking place in that place. I mean, I, I drove, rode my bike past there today and there was a, a, a vehicle delivering parts to it today. So I, I know that it's still in use, even if it's not as a, you know, as a, as a, in the same way that it was during the summer. These are things that, that are problematic, listen to me. I don't know if you have, uh, there are other things that I'm gonna bring up, but I don't know if you have a response to that.
I, I would like the opportunity to respond. First, I will say that it would be the goal, and I believe staff's goal, that through any site plan process, parking would be delineated and those would be the spaces. And part of what would be taken into consideration is the site, the site distance. And public safety as well and welfare. So I would assume, although I won't speak for staff, that if there was a concern about that area being impervious, that that will have to be addressed through the site plan process. It is, it's the goal to delineate parking spaces to eliminate that from being an issue. And I think part of the problem right here, right now, is that there are no delineated spaces, like you would see if you pulled into Jiffy Loop, okay? The B L district, if we, if we forget about the, the classification of the use in terms of a service repair facility, the B L district allows for retail use, which arguably could have more traffic and more parking than the use that we're requesting to continue this auto service. So I don't know that it alleviates your concern to keep it B L because that could, in theory, result in redevelopment of this or just a, a new tenant going through, again, probably a similar site plan to delineate parking spaces, to bring in a drugstore, a dry good or variety shop, florist, garden shop. Now, that's not their intent, that's not the intent of the Joy family, but those are the uses that right now are principal permitted uses in the B L district. And I don't know that any of those are necessarily less intense in use than the concerns that you're talking about here with some of the parking issues. So I, I, I can't speak for them. I'll ask you guys to chime in if you have anything extra to add because you're obviously much more familiar with the site than I am. But I do know it's the intent to delineate those parking spaces and eliminate any concerns about the site distance and the walkability as well of the site.
Anything from any of my colleagues here? Um, I have a question about the changes argument, that, um, you know, we can, we can ask for a change of use because there have been changes in the neighborhood. And, um, I'm not entirely sure that that works in your favor. Because, um, if you look at the neighborhood as it used to be, um, and we look at the property values of the houses, there didn't used to be historic district, that's a change. This is right opposite to houses that are. This is right opposite to houses that are bound by historic governments, covenants, and regulations. The property values of those houses, which have had considerable improvements up and down Springfield Avenue, are very, very different from what they were when this, when this was operating originally as a, even a service station. Um, my neighbor two doors down paid eight thousand five hundred dollars for his house in the nineteen seventies. A house next door to him between us sold for five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's, it's changed. And we have to consider whether it's appropriate in that neighborhood as it exists now, which has changed, and has changed economically greatly, whether it's appropriate for us to rezone a business local to a business general, which in itself is designed for businesses which don't really necessarily fit in a residential area. We, we have a business general classification, but we don't have any business general, general zones on that zoning map, because Sykesville is kind of a small place, and there are very, very few of them. I can think of a couple that may be rezoned, but I'm not sure that this property is an appropriate one, given its postage stamp size, given its location. I wonder if you wanna address that particular change.
I don't necessarily disagree with you about the BL versus BG district, and I understand that this would be the only property in the town. Part of that is the, is the language of the text that allows for the service station in a BG district. We are just asking for this to be legalized as it exists, and as it has existed from the early nineteen hundreds. So I don't, I, I don't necessarily stand up here and say, oh, this would be appropriate for a target. I mean, like barring the size of the property, which obviously is never going to accommodate that type of use, that oftentimes is what one envisions when you think of the BG district, it's your highest intensity commercial district. That's not what we're asking for here today, and I think that the size of this property inherently limits any potential uses of it, and so it eases those concerns that this is going to bring in a use like that. I, I understand your sentiment about the property values increasing in time, and I think that that's an inherent, inherent characteristic across our county. Um, probably you could say the same about any locality within Carroll County and beyond. Um, the, the change in the character of the neighborhood goes beyond just the increase in property values to that surrounding area, but also the other development that's occurred within the town and within the surrounding area. Um, and I think in this case, when we look at change in the character of the neighborhood, we look, we have a, we have a look back period, if you will, for a rezoning. And the look back period dates to the most recent comprehensive rezoning. I can't remember if we came up with a date as to when that occurred, but it's been some time, I believe, since the most recent comprehensive rezoning. So we have quite a look back here, which is not always the case. And so a lot of things have happened in this town, and, um, especially the, the commercial development along Main Street that has kind of continued upwards, the Warfield development, all of those speak to the need for a little bit more. Despite the fact that an automobile service station is a principal permitted in, permitted use in the BG district, I would assert to you that it kind of fits within the, the intent of the BL district, right? It serves that community, especially one of this size. Because again, we're not talking about your huge massive, um, automobile service station. We're talk, we're talking about a little, small, community-based service station, and that really does suit the needs of a local community. So I don't think that those characteristics have changed in the area, despite the fact that perhaps property values have. And to that, I would say that, uh, the hope is to do facade improvements, and to, to make this look pretty, and to add to the character of the neighborhood overall, but I think it's a needed, uh, service for any area, but especially for one that has always historically had that service in this location.
It's quite a few years since it had that service in this location. When, when did it actually close?
That's two thousand and seven, I believe.
Two thousand and seven, because it was only actually zoned as a service station in business local in two thousand and five.
That, that started to change in the nineteen eighties.
I mean, the, the actual, the actual zoning, language of the zoning allowed service stations part of business local in two thousand and five.
The, the business local changed for the property. I have, the minutes actually, a copy from one of these meetings. It was either eighty-four or eighty-seven when it was changed then, and dad never disputed the change, because it didn't seem to have any major effect. He still would be able to carry on with business as he was, and why hire a lawyer and go have a big discussion about it when he can just carry on his merry way, so.
So, so what happened in two thousand and five, if anybody can fill us in on that? When the actual designation as a, as a permitted use or a conditional use, I think it is, in, in business local was service station, because that, that, that has two thousand and five, um, the actual amendment, in, in the actual zoning, yeah. Yeah, so what happened in two thousand and five for that to be necessary?
I don't, I mean, I don't think any of us have a history on that.
No. Another question for you in terms of changing, changes. That Springfield Avenue used to be the main state road. Still a state road, but it used to be the main state road, and then thirty-two was built. I, I can see back in the day that, that, you know, it would make sense to have a gas station on, on a main state road and, and serving the town, but the town's changed considerably since then. And there, there are many, many gas stations available, many, many repair facilities available. Um, it's, it's not the only one. Is there really a need on that particular change for a service that really doesn't have the same traffic coming past it? I mean, I could see back in the day where it was a good idea to have that, and I'm not sure that that's the case today in terms of the changes in the town.
You mean for the service facility?
Yeah.
Okay, 'cause, uh, we all understand, we're not requesting to go back to a fuel station. I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
But you wouldn't have to.
The site would never support a fuel station in today's, in, in modern regulations, I would say to you. Whether there's a need for the use or not, that's these guys' job to decide. Um, you know, can they or can they not support a business there? That's a market-based decision that could change today, it could change five days from now. And so, I'm not the one to tell you whether there is or is not, I'm telling you that they've, that they want to continue this use there, um, that we think we, we can meet the criteria here required, we think it's an appropriate use of that property, and it's, it's their desire to continue the historical use that, that their father passed on to them. Um, but that's, um, I can't explicitly answer that, because I think that's just a market.
Fair, fair answer, yeah. Um, one of the requirements, um, in the language of the business local, which also applies to business general, is that all, um, waste and hazardous materials are stored inside and not outside. And that certainly isn't the case, and hasn't been the case in the operation of, of, of the businesses that's been existed for almost the last year, and it's not the case today. Um, there's considerable number of auto parts, used auto parts out back, still pile of tires out back. And is there actual space within that building, the building and that footprint, to run a business of this type and store the waste indoors?
I believe there is. I'm not aware of exactly what hazardous materials you're speaking to that are, are stored outside.
Well, I'm talking to in, industrial waste, I mean, any, any materials that's a byproduct of the business is supposed to be stored inside according to the language of the design. It isn't and hasn't been. And, um, you know, looking at how that business has operated, that, that to me is an issue.
And once, sorry to jump on the topic.
No, that's okay.
But like, our current tenant there, fully licensed, insured, ready to put a sign up and open the doors a year ago. Once you do that, I have a lot of experience with the M D after the fuel tanks and everything there. They ensure that those rules that you're speaking of are followed. They come around, they check, they send letters, they in, uh, enforce fines. There's ample room inside to, to deal with your concern there. Another thing with that is too, there's, there's time constraints on that when you're open and in production. That stuff doesn't sit around for days, weeks, months, and it's, it's cycled through on a regular basis to avoid the problems of storage and, and hazards, you know, nobody wants to be walking by trying to work on stuff and tripping over old tires and stuff like that. So, once it's operating public facing, not only is it better for the business to have that under control, but the M D is very, very strict about how that's handled. That's one thing that has changed dramatically since, even since our finally closed, you know, uh, fifteen years ago now.
Okay, we have a public memo. Can, can you, can you call us at the podium and ask us?
No, that's okay, that's okay.
You state your name and I, and then go ahead.
My name is Jill Singleton. I live on Springfield Avenue. I just have a question. You said that there is ample room inside the buildings to store, so why aren't they being stored there now, if there's room?
I think it was just the fact that it wasn't even known to be considered an issue until just now, when he said it has to be inside per code.
So, so they don't know the code at the moment?
They're not a business, they're not a running business out of there.
There's not, there's not an official business running out of there right now. There can't be legally.
So it's an unofficial business running out there right now?
There's private, private use being done in there, um, at the moment.
I'm just a bit taken aback if there is room inside, why they don't go to the trouble of, of bringing those materials inside, rather than allowing them to sit outside like that.
It could possibly be a deterrent for more vandalism on the back of the property. If it looks like someone's using it or moving around there, keeps the kids from strapping in the building and having, to have us come and take care of that. It's also like we discussed before, the, the back of that building has historically been, like I said, kind of kids' foot traffic, and that causes a problem. We wanna put fencing there to be able to make it less unsightly, if there was a problem with unsightliness, and also keep the kids out where they don't belong. Um, but yeah, no, the, um, those kind of issues shouldn't be a concern once things are official and actually operating.
Can I, um, bring up other points, or should we?
Oh, no, no, yeah, please, please go ahead.
Okay.
Well, and I'll, I'll, I just, I do wanna say this, this is, it's really not a public hearing right here, it's simply just a, a, a conversation. I mean, again, it's a small intimate crowd, so, you know, I'm not gonna say anything negative, but it's.
I, I don't, whatever is, I wanna follow the rules, so whatever.
If, if you want to make a comment, then please make a comment. Yeah, but by all means, make a comment, but not a series of questions, because that, that's really our job.
Okay, yeah. Um, and so now I'm taken aback, and what is my comment? I guess as I've heard the petition being read, um, and I didn't follow all of the technical details and so forth, but I heard a lot, something about the, the change in the neighborhood. And, you know, I've lived there for twenty-three years now, and it's every bit as much a residential neighborhood as when we moved in. I don't see it becoming a more commercialized neighborhood. Um, it's true that there is maybe two new businesses now on the, on the bottom end of, of, um, Springfield, but, um, in buildings that were already existing as, as business buildings. So it's not like there's a lot of new business creeping up Springfield Avenue. And in terms of what's happening in Warfield, what we see right now is, um, a lot of residential buildings. Supposedly, there may be in the future some other kinds of buildings which would be supported, um, you know, maybe restaurants or retail. But in terms of saying that, that that neighborhood is becoming more commercialized, um, I don't see it. And I'm, it's not something I really want to see a more commercialized neighborhood. Uh, it was different when your, um, dad had the little store. I mean, our son went to Sykesville Middle, and he stopped by and bought candy. That's not what it's gonna be. It's not gonna be that kind of a, of a place anymore. And personally, I don't see a particular need, you know, we have other places in the, in the, up in Eldersburg or in Sykesville itself that we can go for auto repair. Uh, I don't see a sort of a crying need for it. So I guess I'm just concerned, I don't want the residential character of the neighbor, neighborhood being transformed into a commercial neighborhood. Um, and that's what I seem to hear, um, with the petition as it was read.
Thank you, thank you very much for that, yeah. I don't know if you want to respond, or if you feel you've already covered that.
No, no, I will, because I think that's a really important point to make, and that's a technical requirement. When I see change in the character of the neighborhood, that's, uh, Maryland case law calls that out as the terminology to use. It does not, I, we are not advocating for this neighborhood to become commercial. Um, there is a designated area that is called out as the neighborhood that's attached to this petition. And within that area, we have seen changes over the years. And some of that is the rezoning of the Warfield piece. Perhaps, like you noted, it hasn't actually been re, redeveloped to too much commercial yet, but the rezoning that accommodates the commercial development there, and some of that other, um, retail that you noted kind of down, if you will. Um, so that's not, that's a technical requirement in terms of the change of the character of the neighborhood. It does not mean that, um, that the neighborhood itself has become commercial, and that's not what we're advocating for here today as well. Um, in terms of the tenants storing materials inside, I think Tom answered that, that pretty well. But it's my understanding that as part of a site plan process, any, I mean, first of all, you're subject to the requirements of the code. And any requirement of the code that someone's not following is cause for a site plan violation, arguably, number one. So that gives a little bit more enforcement mechanism as well. And number two, could perhaps even be a note on the site plan that says materials are to be stored, you know, interior, or says something specifically that then is very clear to anyone looking at that as to what's required there. I've seen similar language with other automobile service stations, because that is one of the concerns. And M D, as, as Tom stated, M D does look to that also as well in terms of their compliance.
What defines interior storage? I mean, what type of, I mean, could it be a shed, or?
Um, it needs to be within the building, it says.
Within the building, okay.
Whatever that constitutes.
Okay, okay.
Going back to you, and the, the three potential scenarios.
Yes.
Okay, I, I wanna talk, uh, for just a second about, uh, number two, modifying the text amendment. Assuming that the, the, the commission is, is positive to, to, uh, to one of the two acceptable, accepting outcomes, excuse me. What exactly does that mean, modifying the text amendment?
So a lot of, it would be a text amendment to modify the business local zone?
To allow a automo- automobile and motorcycle repair facility?
Right, as a conditional use.
As a conditional use.
So.
And that means anybody else at a BL district who wants to operate this would have to come before, uh, zoning.
Or the zoning appeals.
Okay, for a separate conditional use for their parcel in the BL district.
Correct. And even there, you, if you went with that recommendation and council then approved that recommendation, they would then still have to go back to the Board of Zoning Appeals and receive approval for that conditional use at that property.
Assuming we allow the text amendment.
Correct.
They, they're still, okay.
Yeah, they would still be subject to Board of Zoning Appeals review, since it would be a conditional use.
Okay, and, and today, business local, which allows X amount of commercial uses, as well as some residential uses, business general allowing a few more uses, having some stricter potentially setback requirements. Got it. Coming to you now, on the setbacks, assuming it is a BL district, okay? Uh, remains a BL district, and, and this is denied tonight. However, they're allowed commercial use for that property. Given it's an existing building under a BL district, are we gonna have setback issues there potentially?
Again, not knowing specifically what the setbacks are on this building, just given the size of the lot, I would say anything that was gonna operate there is all, is likely not going to meet any of our existing setbacks spelled out in probably any of our zones.
Under the BL zoning, use, is use as a storage lot allowed?
Good question, and I don't have the answer to specifically.
That'd be good to know.
Yeah.
Probably not. I don't, I don't think storage is allowed in our BL district. I think that's a, either general, uh, business general, or, uh, one of our industrial zones.
Parking lot allowed?
Parking lot's allowed, I think, as a, an accessory use to just about any district, for any use.
Thank you.
So just to go back to your point, um, in the business, so just definition of, uh, excuse me, the service station, it does say that, um, no storage or parking space is offered for rent in, in that area, so that's just specifically for that use. Um, so generally, if it's storage, would be on a used-to-use basis, but as Joe said, most likely not.
I'm, I'm, I'm looking at it, it.
It really, any, I'm sorry, not to interrupt. And really, any, I'm sorry not to interrupt. I was just gonna say, you know, if, if this is a potential path to go down is to modify the business local district, then really any modification that you want to make is, is on the table for that.
Understand, I wasn't going there. It was more, more to the, is for, for this body is to understand the, the, what can happen at this property, whether it, it, whether it, whether the three scenarios happens, if it's allowed to go and the uh rezoning classification or rewrite occurs, what impact that has uh by allowing fifteen other uses for this site. That they can go out and now add it to be able to use. Not saying they will, it sounds like they, they don't. If it remains, uh, if, if the modification, then, then you know, we can do really anything. As related to denial, their rights, what, what their rights are to be able to use this property. And I don't want to, personally, I don't want to stop a, a business from trying to go when, when another business could go there and we're just looking at two more years kicking this can down the road to another business goes, which may not have a better use than is existing today. I'm not saying this is the best use. I'm just saying it, it, it may not be. So that's why I asked the questions about what is allowed under B L and B G and, and uh, so we all kind of fully informed.
Well, and I'll add this too, just from a staff perspective, that it's, you know, when, when this conversation first got going, it's interesting because it's an existing building that we know doesn't necessarily meet setbacks, but the building is a service garage building.
Yes.
What it is. I mean, so in order to say you can't have a service garage there means that a modification to the building would have to happen for them to do anything else there. So that's why, you know, going through the different scenarios and trying to figure out, well, what is the, what is the best solution for this particular piece of property is kind of how we came up with the, the, the options that are available to the planning group.
So that being said, any more comments or questions or issues that anyone wants to do it here? Ted?
Do you guys have like a, a lease or agreement for how long your tenant wants to give it a go? Or is he, you know, saying, I'm gonna try it for a year, I'm gonna try it for five?
We're nearing the end of our first year.
Uh-huh.
Um, so the idea was, you know, the, the, the property being the non-conforming and the missing the usage window had some room for argument. The, the book says, was it still used for that purpose? It doesn't say commercially or as a business. Was it used for the purpose of repairing automobiles, which it was? Him and I grew up around cars. I A S E master certified. I do I T for a living, but we live and breathe mechanical stuff. We build our hot rods there. We play with toys. We have motorcycles. I now have three boys. They're all gonna grow up with a wrench in their hand and want to be into this kind of thing. So the usage technically never stopped even though the business stopped. We brought Josh in. He contacted us. He was very interested in, he saw the pictures of the old golf and he was just like, I want to, I wa- I grew up in Sykesville, I want to have my little shop. I want to do what your dad did. And uh, so we said, that sounds like a great fit. So we brought him in and we got started and knock, knock. Hey, you know, you can't do that anymore. Been doing it for a hundred and six years with a small lapse. It, prospectively to a hundred and six years, it's a very small window of time where it wasn't doing what it had been doing. So that really turned everything for us upside down. Obviously, it's had an effect on his livelihood. He's gotten other employment. So our technical lease started January first and he had an intention, and we had our agreement the first year. It was a very reduced rate and in that agreement, he's been improving. If you were inside the building, you can see a drastic improvement from what it looked like nine, ten months ago. The idea was also improve the outside and make it, it is the main pipe coming down the hill. It's the first thing you see. It's not Main Street. It's people coming off thirty-two on Springfield Avenue. They see that building. We want them to see like the pictures that we have hanging up at our house. Dad's Chevelle sitting at the gas pump with sixty-nine cents and ninety-nine cents. If you'd like to pay sixty-nine cents for regular right now, raise your hand. Yeah, so many times have changed, yeah, but so um, the intent was at the end of the first year, with the very reduced rate and the agreement that he was putting his own uh resources into improving the property. The next one was a five-year agreement and he's chomping at the bit to sign that five-year agreement. Like I said, licensed, insured, the whole nine yards done and ready to put his logo that has the Maryland flag in the background. Everything's great looking. Knock, knock, knock. You can't do that. So where, where we're at right now is not that we want to do something different, not that we want to do something new, not that we want to step away from this property and be like, I don't know what's gonna be there next, but it's gonna fit in business local. It's gonna have to, but our, our, we're out of it. We don't, we don't want to go that route. We wanted it just to be what it's always been. So it's, it's not so much a change, it's just give us permission to do what we've always done uh at that location. So that's, that's where we're at right now.
And I think to clarify what he said earlier, the, the meeting minutes we had from nineteen eighty-seven is when it was changed from business general to business local. So it used to be that it was changed away from that because I don't know what reasons. And, and like the gentleman here at the zoning petition meeting said, he's like, all of this happened long before any of us were around to, to even know why it happened that way. So everyone at zoning appeal recommended that we go this route, the business general, because they said that rezoning it was the best path forward to, to keep it as it was, to not make changes to it, but just to keep it as an operating automotive facility. You know, it, it sold gasoline along with the automotive repair facility, but for the entire time that it's been there, it's been an automotive repair facility that sold gasoline. So.
Sold it out of five gallon cans the first time they sold gas there. They didn't have pumps or anything.
And, and to chime off of what they just said and to be fully transparent, that was the conversation at the beginning when I got involved was, what's the best path forward to just continue this use? Is it a text amendment? Is it a rezoning? Um, and that's when we, we took off on the rezoning path. We're not opposed to a potential text amendment. My concern with a text amendment is that it creates an entire, if it's a conditional use for them, it creates a whole other process that they have to get through in terms of legal fees, surveying, engineering costs to get plans prepared, to go to a B Z A hearing, the time that it takes to get through that hearing. So um, like I said, they're not, we're not opposed to a text amendment as opposed to a rezoning. The goal here is to continue the use at this property uh through whichever is most amenable to the town.
Anything else?
I just have one thing. I was looking at the north end of the property. The ability to actually make that, which I would assume would be the parking lot if it was to be done. What's the, I mean, it's just, it's overgrown, it's trees and things right now, isn't it?
Well, that's.
If I understand what I, what I looked at correctly.
That's currently where the state roads people have all their like.
My luggage, equipment and supplies.
So I believe that the state road, there's this, there's a stone wall marked here and I believe they're on this side of the stone wall. Correct. So the state stuff is sitting like in this little corner here. It's not in the, in the actual, what I would consider parcel four forty-eighty-eight.
So if you look at this also, and I should have made this clear at the beginning, but the, the parcel where the building is that you're, that you exist today is owned by the Joyce. The parcel to the rear, which is the old railroad bed, is owned by the Joyce. And then this whole parcel here is also owned by the Joyce.
So is my understanding that we're considering?
Use this and locate where he's talking about.
And yeah, I answered what you're about to ask. It's just the, the triangle that we're looking to change in the zoning on.
Okay, so.
Not the other two pieces of property.
So would the other two pieces of property be considered active with the business?
They are just, they would be the parking, which when we spoke previously and since they are, they're local as well, right? So that would fall.
That's, that's what I'm trying to figure out is if they're in the, if they're in the local as well.
These, these two parcels?
Yes.
Let's just call them subservient parcels to this are, are not zoned the same. These are actually both zoned residential and obviously since there's no buildings on them, they can't conform to any kind of residential setbacks or anything. So nothing really happened on those parcels. Uh, well, what our code does allow is for what we call off-site parking.
Okay.
Now, this would be, it's basically off-site in name only because it's, it's three separate parcels all owned by the same person, party. Uh, so we could allow, again, through a board of zoning appeals process is.
See, that's where I'm going with this is I think, I think this whole thing is, there's, you're still gonna get into the, the zoning, the B Z like part of this, no matter what you do, because you can't fit cars on the triangle without blocking views and sight lines and everything.
Is this a detail we missed in our first meeting? I appreciate you putting that out. Thank you. We've never discussed that.
Well, I've got to thank the, the, the Jane, I forgot her last name, who stood up here earlier and talked about the sight lines as a crossing guard because that, that's a, that is a serious concern. And then coming back here, I didn't even ask that question, but I, you know, my assumption is all parking is back there, but if we're talking a zoning issue now, that, that.
Correct. And that's, that's why I was wondering is if, if even, even if we were to do this, the, and you're still gonna have to go through the other part of it to go do the parking lot.
My understanding, what, what we talked about at the other town meeting was that all of the considered site parking that would be done on the site plan would be on parcel one. It would be to the, I guess that's the, if we're looking at north is straight up, it would be to the southeast portion of the, basically there's parking all along the side of the building on Central Avenue and then all in front of the bay.
It's somewhat deceiving when you go and buy the property now because our property goes well out into the road and, and that triangle there, where you're coming down central and getting to Springfield Avenue, where everyone actually turns is driving across our property all the time and has been for a very long time.
So is that more in line with that, this, this turn that's, that's marked there?
That is. That's where people, yeah.
That's, that's what you would consider where, where people turn?
Right.
Yeah, everybody's always cut it off.
And they, they, you know, they pull, they don't pull up to the stop sign at Springfield in Central. They pull up and start making the left and you know, are pulling in from there. So yeah.
The kind of dashed line on there is the existing roadbed.
Okay. So the, oh, so the dash line, yeah, you trace it. Okay, cool.
Right.
That's, I'm just trying to understand. It wasn't marked as anything, so like.
Great, sorry, yes.
No, it's fine. That's just, that's how they did it.
Yep.
So I've got to ask the question, all parking for this use is to be kept within that triangle that has the red line on the left, on my left, the black line or the roadbed really on the right.
Correct. You can't take away the roadbed.
And, and the top of the triangle that faces the middle school. Is that what I just heard? Or is any parking going to be on?
I think there's confusion of the dash line. The dash line is not the roadbed. The dash line, I'm not sure why, like I said, John Nigro was supposed to be here for the meeting as well because he did the, he did that drawing.
Yeah.
But the triangle is our property and that's where all parking was supposed to stand in that triangle.
So if, I, I mean, if we were to go look at that, right, uh, you would be able to, I mean, it looks like he located something here to put,
Yeah, yeah.
to put this, because usually they mark this with, the other ones are done with spikes, uh road ties. And of course, you don't want to do that right next to the road, but.
Yeah, so he.
I would assume that was sidelined.
By using the measure, measurements is how they get to that, that corner.
Right.
They used to have, you know, it, it would have had a spike in the ground that has since been.
Right. It's been, it's run over or paved over or something at that point, yeah.
So I'm pulling up my old notes and you, you made, you made me go back in time here. That's why I can't, I couldn't recall this. But when we met in March or so, we did talk about if we couldn't meet the parking requirements on site, then yes, we would have to go through the B Z A process to accommodate it on those other parcels. Um, but that's if we cannot meet it on site. The goal obviously would be to try to meet it on site and we'd need to probably provide A D A spaces and that sort of thing as well, but if not, then yes.
So that's what I was kind of looking at was just back at the napkin math, just, I mean, a parking space is twelve foot wide by, what's the depth on it? It's like fourteen, twelve by fourteen.
Our requirements are eight by twenty.
Eight by twenty, okay. So an eight by twenty, you've got maybe six slots, six parking spots on the left side of the building, on the, the, the uh, the south, the southwest side. You've maybe got two or three on the north, the northeast side of the building. I mean, I don't know how busy this place would be.
There was, I know briefly too, that it'd come up with what is the required minimum parking here.
Right, and that.
We all believe we'd be well, but I think it was two spots.
The parking is calculated based on the floor area of the retail component here because it's really.
You gotta be able to store cars that you're working on also.
Right. That's where I'm getting at this is.
No, I understand that, but the parking requirement from a retail side of things for customer parking is based on the floor area of the retail size. And so we believe we can certainly accommodate that on site. I think the question would then be if we needed to store additional vehicles, then potentially going through the B Z A process.
Right. It depends on how, how busy this, how busy the tenant decides that they're going to be. I mean, they may have four or five vehicles at one time there. They may have, they may take up all of the allotted spaces with their storage.
Take up allotted, I mean, I'm not gonna speak for, for Joe's enforcement mechanisms here, but I, I'd say my experience, my experience is that you cannot take up your retail, retail parking for your business storage purposes. So that, that would be contemplated in and if there were additional storage needed, then yes, we would have to go through the B Z A process.
My guess is if they're smart, if this is allowed to happen and they're smart property owners and their business, and their tenant's business is bumping, they're going to figure out how to.
How to get this to be a parking lot or a storage lot.
Make this a parking lot and come back and make that a parking lot because they've got a successful tenant who will pay them more rent for that lot.
Correct, correct.
So.
I, I don't deny.
More business.
I was gonna say, we appreciate the business advice.
Just say it.
I'm just looking at it from the, the, the overall size and what, what can be done, so.
That, that actually, actually is a good point.
But I will say what you're pointing out is just reinforcing the fact that there's not much stuff that can, can go on this site.
Oh, yes.
You know, point two acres. If you look down that B G list, even though it might seem like it opens it up, it really doesn't.
Every single thing that Kevin read could not go there.
Yeah.
Our business generalists.
I want to go back to you guys for a second if I, if I may.
You guys, I'm done.
When, when, we, we talk about the approval process, if, if assuming this is, is done uh and then goes for a public hearing and any of the restrictions would come into the site planning process?
But well, potentially. Now, it's either site plan or potentially the B Z A process. Like that's where you can, you have a little more flexibility to add specific site conditions at a B Z A level than you would at a site plan level. Now, obviously you have to meet the general site plan requirements, no matter what they are. But if we're talking about a special uh or a conditional use, something like that on this property, then at the B Z A hearing, if there's a special circumstance, the B Z A can then apply um.
Got it.
You know, a particular issue.
For example, sight lines.
Right, right.
Well, that will have, will we not have to meet that for site plan?
You would have to meet that at the site plan level.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. But either or, and it can be written in.
Yes. Well, you wouldn't have to.
It's in, it's written in.
It's already there. You wouldn't have to change anything for that.
Understand. Yes, thank you.
Any other comments?
And here's the thing too, and again, we, just to throw this out as an option and again, not to delay a process or anything like that, but if there, you know, if there's a benefit to having the engineer or the surveyor come to a future meeting, you know, certainly we'll have another regular meeting in December, um, you know, if that's an option, that's something that you want to have happen just so we can talk specifically about the site and what may or may not be, uh, may not, may or may not fit there. Something that we can lay on the table as well.
I, I appreciate that. That, that is a potential option as well. I, I will point out too, that if you're inclined to consider a text amendment, that perhaps I could request that you table the rezoning request uh until there's a, a text amendment that then comes back before you for review and have those kind of both play together because it would be my intent to work with Kevin and Joe as well through a text amendment process to kind of look at the language and make sure it would fit this type of use and that sort of thing. So I think those two could be talked about together and it's my understanding, and I won't speak for you, that that specific amendment would come back before you, before it would then go through, go to a public hearing at mayor and council.
That, that's correct. It would follow the same, the same process as what we're following right now. So uh, any information that would come back before planning commission would then be evaluated in the same, well, I guess it would be a different report, but a report would then be generated and sent to council and they would have their public hearing just based on the text amendment rather than a rezoning request.
So what do you think, folks? I think we should, is anybody ready to move ahead on, on a vote on the business general application? Do you think, do you want to table that? Do you think we should?
What's, what is uh, what color up there? I do want to take.
Oh, he wants to look at the map. He's going for the map, right?
Yeah, with that tiny little red truck.
How do we get a bay one of these in our office, Joe?
That's what it's like. That's what it's like.
We'll get you one, yeah.
So. Anything further to add, Steve, after that?
Uh, I just wanna see the impact, really. Uh, and my color blindness is having me, between the, the dark orange and the red, it's a little difficult, but I think I got it, got it figured out. What I've heard here today, I, I've heard some, uh, serious concerns from, from, uh, both member of this commission as well as, as at least one public member, uh, that, that I think certainly need to address. Uh, should this move forward, should be addressed. I think that regardless of the use here, we're gonna have very, at least some similar concerns. The site absolute, sightline issues, absolutely. Uh, some of the environmental with another use, not so much depending on the use. Uh, uh, in my, in my personal line of business, I lease a lot of space, uh, and we have a number of leases with, with gas and mechanic tenants. So we do have some, some environmental issues that I've run into in the past, and what they say is, is true. There's MD is involved, is heavily involved. Not gonna say a little oil won't spill from here and there, uh, but, but as far as a, a major issue typically won't happen, especially if there's not gas there, but, but, and even so, I think we have more, uh, no disrespect to the family, but I think there's more issue with the past environmental concern there than would be with the future, under a future use, uh, with the regulations that are in place. But the sightlines concern me, given the middle schools across the street. Uh, I, I, I don't know what, to move forward, I am inclined to vote to move forward, I'm not sure the best way to move forward, but with the understanding that there are some serious concerns with the layout of the site that need to be addressed, whether that be an BZA through a, through a, uh, modification, or whether through a, a rewrite. I think there's serious concerns with this site that would need to be addressed to allow this use to, to continue and potentially any new use to continue.
If I could, I mean, I could, really, just to get some direction, I can simply ask, is it, is it the opinion of the, the commission that we move forward looking at the Business General District and rezoning? Or is it likely, or I guess I should say more likely, that a modification to the Business Local District to allow this type of use? And we can, we as staff and, and the applicant can go through and try to figure out uh, how to address some of the concerns that have been raised here tonight?
Well, I think, I think the second of those two options would be the one that I would recommend.
Yeah, I, I would say, I don't know if we're there yet. I haven't, I, you know, I, we, we haven't really brought it out. I think if we were to go forward, then it may be the second of the two, uh, may be a way to move forward. Uh, but I, I don't know if this commission is there yet, so.
So, well, if, again, if you wanna give direction, you know, staff can at least start working on what that modification would look like to the BL district, again, not saying that that's what we're going to do, but at least you can get some language, uh, in front of you to look at, to, to figure out whether or not that's something that you'd be comfortable with.
I would also like to, I'd, I'd like to hear from the engineer, I think that would be, would be helpful in terms of what the engineer believes is feasible on that site, and what to me anecdotally looks like is feasible on that site, cause if you have eight parking spaces, I don't know where anybody else is gonna be on that lot.
Where they're employed.
It's, it's just such a tiny postage stamp, and I'm really, I'm very sympathetic to the idea of it being, you know, something that's been in that neighborhood for a long time, that it, that it is a, it is a building that's designed for what its purpose is. But I still do have some concerns about how that lot is right now, the fact that it's run down a lot from what it used to be. And, um, I, I also have concerns about if we're gonna zone the one piece in town as Business General, as a planning decision, it just doesn't seem to be a very well thought-through planning decision to have it as that little postage stamp. Cause that's not really the intent of that particular, particularly. So I, I'd rather tackle it a different way than, than, than voting to change it to Business General. I'd rather do that second option, and I'm not sure we're ready to do that tonight.
Oh, no, yeah, I'm like.
Um, I would like to table it, I, I don't wanna vote it down or, or, or put an obstruction in this place at this point. Um, but, but I, I just like some more, I, I'd like to hear from the engineer and that.
Well, again, just.
And think about how that, that text amendment would work.
Absolutely, and I think, again, uh, just for, for a process standpoint, it's, there's no time limit necessarily on the, your report and recommendation of when that has to go back to council. So, if that means it's gonna take another meeting, I don't necessarily know if we have to table it necessarily. We just have to not make that recommendation yet, just keep the conversation going. So, it, it'll be on the agenda for next month, uh, and, you know, we can have some language uh, put together on what a, what a, a text amendment might actually look like, and then maybe the engineer can also attend in, in December and we can just keep the conversation going.
Good, well, I think that probably is the best way forward at this particular point, right? Does that make sense to you? I don't know if it makes sense to you, but do you understand?
It does make, yes, no, I, I, I do understand, and I, I've been very involved in the text amendment process in other jurisdictions, so I look forward to working with Joe and Kevin to, uh, joining in on Sykesville.
Okay, Karen, may I make one other suggestion? I, I would also listen to the comments brought up today and from an operational standpoint, kind of figure that out in advance, too.
I appreciate that, and I think.
Possibly with the engineer on sightlines, but also figure that out.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good, I think we're probably done with this particular portion. I'm sorry it took so long, but it's kind of, you know.
No, we, that's why we're here, to have, to have the conversation, right?
So, next, hopefully next in, in December, we'll, we'll, we'll tackle the rest of this. So moving on the agenda, thank you again for coming, folks.
Thank you, thank you.
Um, town updates. Do we have any town updates?
Yeah, you'll be accountable.
Yeah.
Uh, just a couple of quick things, I'm sure everybody's noticed the wonderful repaving on Main Street, uh, which is fantastic. Uh, unfortunately, Springfield Avenue still has some, some work to be done. Um, obviously, there is stormwater work that is scheduled to, it was supposed to, uh, was scheduled to start roughly two weeks ago. May, uh, the contractor simply has not mobilized yet, but, uh, there will be stormwater work that is done on Springfield Avenue, and then hopefully in the spring, maybe late spring, uh, we'll see Springfield Avenue as nice as our, our Main Street right now.
They're planning to do the sidewalks as well, they've got cuts through them, do you know?
Yes, yeah, so, well, it's replacing existing sidewalks. There's not gonna be like new sidewalks on both sides or anything like that, it's just where the sidewalks are today, we'll get new, new concrete.
Okay, good.
Um, uh, so that's paving in Springfield Avenue, and then really just a, a heads up that tomorrow, actually, we're kicking off our, I don't really know exactly what to call it, uh, but we'll just call it the, the rezoning committee, uh, is getting together. And again, this is to look at our entire zoning ordinance and, and really start to take a deep dive into, uh, addressing some of these long, long problems that we have. Now, we expect that process to, to go on quite a bit, like, we're, we're not anticipating this to be done in, uh, the next twelve months or so. It's probably gonna be more like eighteen. Um, but of course, the planning commission will certainly be playing a, a large role in that. We have a small committee that's gonna start getting together, and once they start to get the meat of the document kind of in place is when we'll, we'll start including the, uh, the planning commission and, um, uh, getting into the, the weeds on all the, all the changes that we potentially might make. So again, just a, just a heads up on, on that, that process is finally kicking off.
Good.
I was thinking, um, just the other pending, um, items that have come before planning commission and are working through the county process, so the enclave subdivision, so last conversation I had with their representative, um, they have resubmitted, they've addressed the first round of county comments, resubmitted their new plans, um, and are working through, hopefully, the second round of county comments, and then as soon as those are, you know, satisfied, we will be able to bring that back before this body. Um, same thing with the, the Schoolhouse Road subdivision, they're, they're going through a, a similar process with the county as well, um, trying to address, address the comments, and then, yeah, once those, all those comments are satisfied, we will likely bring it back before this, this body for additional approvals, so.
Good, well, thank you. Anything else? In which case, I move that we adjourn, do I have a second there? Steve, for a favor, we're gonna finish, thank you, folks.